I'm Kube Shack, I'm council president and we are at the committee of the whole meeting scheduled for Thursday, August 15, 2019 at 5:00 PM. And we'll go around the room for anybody that's in the audience or watching it TV again. Thank you. Kube Shack Council President.
Steve Philip, Alder Person.
Shane Blazer, Alder Person.
Tom Ream, Alderman.
Scott Cogan, Alder Person.
Joe Zerfle, Alder Person.
Jake Cavanaugh, Alder Person.
Jen Kelleck, City Employee.
Dawn Urban, Human Resources.
Wonderful. And item number one was called order, we did that. Item number two, discuss and act on the next step in addressing the results of the employee survey from the special HR meeting held on August 7, 2019. And does anybody need a background on that survey that was presented? HR Committee Chairperson, do you have any?
I was just gonna, I'm not sure what rest of the council feels or committee feels, but I don't know, maybe if it'd be appropriate for our HR director to make, I think we all, I don't want to speak for you, but I think we all agree that there needs to be a next step. And maybe it'd be prudent for Dawn to give some recommendations, but I think ultimately, I personally think we should have Sarah come back and work individually with departments or to do whatever she thinks the next step is to try to funnel and identify specifics. Because I thought the original presentation was pretty general and I think we need to narrow it down to more specific things that we can, each department could address or, I don't know. What do you think, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely. And what I wanted to do was not having anything specific on this, but you know, take those initial steps and get the initial inquiries from everybody that had participated or that had watched it because it, although I was aware that this survey was about, I was, I guess, I'll say the results were rather interesting and kind of eye-opening for what our employees have with this organization. And I think that it's a case where if Stevens Point had results like this and we had asked what, you know, what did the council do to remedy it and they said nothing, I think that that would be an absolute atrocity. So I think that's what we need to do is take that next step. Obviously, we're not going to fix everything in one night, but making that good faith next step for our, not only our employees, but the residents of the City of Wisconsin Rapids too, because they're the ultimate stakeholders as far as services go and that's why we have local government. The employees that work for the local government provide services. And if it's a case where this organization has got such a, I guess, a negative feel to it, we're not getting us services out of the situation. So again, yeah, absolutely with your recommendation, Mr. Blazer, if Dawn Urban, the HR Committee, HR Director has any suggestions you have for.
Thank you. So I do, and I agree with Alder Person Blazer. I think that having Sarah come back and do some initial one-on-one, not only with department heads, but she referred to personal accountability, some people call it workforce stability. I think that would be a good exercise for everyone to go through. I guess a question I would pose to the council is, do we feel the results would have been different if we would have had more participation in the point-of-view interviews? So we had 25 individuals out of a staff of about 170 employees. And I guess I just throw that out. Do we think we would have different results if we would have had more participation? I'm throwing it out as an option. We could have Sarah come back and we could have all employees go through point-of-view interviews. That way the confidentiality is kind of taken out because it's not, did you go or didn't you go? It's yes, we went, but no one knows what was said. And I just wonder if we would have different results. I don't know the answer to that. I'm throwing it out to see what everyone thinks.
Yep. One thought I have is if she, if and when she comes back on the results, she has clear recommendations, bullet pointed. I think we got feedback, that was step one. If she comes back, I think whether it be her or we do it internally, we need to take action on these bullet points.
Yes, absolutely.
So is that something that would be in a second consultation with her? If she were to come back, she's going to help us, one of them is clearly defining the expectations of supervisors and managers. That's one bullet point. So if we're going to rewrite that into their job description, are we going to do that internally with HR? Is she going to help that? Because I would like to see, before we get more feedback, I'd like to see all these things she recommended completed. Otherwise, we're just taking feedback and not doing much.
So I would see, I would like to see not only what she recommends, but I would like to see the order in which she recommends them. To me, the first step would be getting a clear vision and core values that everyone has a part in. And when I mean everyone, Alder Person's, department heads, employees, that everyone gets together and collectively says, these are our core values. This is how we believe, you know, everyone should act towards each other, you know, whatever it is, teamwork or integrity, whatever those values happen to be. But I do think you get more buy-in and more of a sense of, we're all in this together if you get that cross-sectional group together.
Right. So would that be something she would lead then and help us write with her expertise and that's what?
It could be. So parts of this could be internal, us, you know, HR taking the lead and getting a group together and forming it. Vision and values would probably want to be one of those internal things. The other points would probably be external and we would look more towards Sarah for personal coaching or for leadership development. So I would say it's a combination of both.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, just another one on here, implement a talent development and coaching model. I don't, I wouldn't know if anybody on this council, I mean, we all have experience with probably in our own deployment, but if we would be experts on that to write that, to implement in the city. And that's something where I'm wondering, if we bring Sarah back in, she would help us with those things, not just gather feedback, but help us go through these bullet points so we can see improvement.
And I would like clarification personally on that. That can mean a number of different things.
Right.
Is she talking about succession planning? So when we lose a key employee, we have someone in line? That's a talent matrix model? Or is she talking about, you're going to have X number of retirements in each department in each year, how are you going to fill those? So I guess I would look to her for clarification.
Yeah, I think with, yeah, some clarification and then if we bring her back in, some guidance on those. Because I think the more feedback is always important, but we have the feedback we have to act on, I think, before we get more. And then speaking of another survey, I think we should already start looking to next year on, we talked originally that this would be a yearly deal that we can start to see year-to-year changes we're making if we're improving. And that's what we do at Renaissance. One thought I had, we have advisory councils that have come from our surveys, some from each department that meet monthly. And so they are selected by their own peers and they'll meet monthly with the supervisor. And rather than all this kind of float out there in the interdepartmental conversation or side talk, they can sit down and speak with the managers about it and it can be a monthly basis of, you know, this is what people are talking about, this is the problems we're having. And then it just doesn't all pour out in one employee survey, which may have been what happened here. But that's all. Thank you.
I agree with Jake. I think, I don't know when it stopped, but for years there were labor management meetings that was at, is that, you know, they met on a regular basis and discussed that very thing.
Anyone else?
Not to put you on the spot, Jennifer, sorry, but as an employee here, what are your thoughts? Because I have heard from other employees and one of those things was, they would have liked to see more interviews face-to-face to get a bigger pool than the 25. You know, we still had great participation on the survey end of it, which ultimately, I think, gave us our scores, but I don't know if there was enough face-to-face conversations maybe to really pull out what problems are. I don't know.
I'm.
Sorry to put you on the spot, Jennifer.
No, that's all right. I guess if we go with another survey route, I would think that more participation would be better. I know just in speaking to other employees that part of the reason we had such poor participation is their lack of faith in management and what is going to happen next. So they're looking at this as kind of a waste of time. So I just want to put that out there. I tried to encourage other people to go as well, but those are the responses I got from a lot of the employees. So I guess myself, after doing, I did an interview and then seeing the results, definitely was not enough meat for me. I need more information on where, like even just the scores, why is it scored that way? There just wasn't any of that for me to explain the graphs or when she referenced a Myers-Briggs, I've done that and I thought, oh, great, this is going to be an awesome survey, it's going to be the, you know, awesome results. And I was kind of disappointed in that, to be honest, it did not tell me anything that I didn't already know. So that's just kind of how I felt about it.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Next up, maybe bring her back. I guess I'm not.
I have a question. Is this something Alder Person's could do as well, participate in as well, or is that not?
I would have no problem participating. I think it's important because we're part of the, well, like I've always said from the beginning, if the problem stems from us or from middle management or from employees, I think we need to identify where those holes are and see what we can do to, yeah, I think it's important that we participate too.
Yeah, I think one of the things you said stood out to me and what I was just previously talking about is there wasn't, there's not that much faith that any action is going to be taken. And that's why I think that we can start knocking off these bullet points or we should attempt to before we start getting more feedback. And if it, whether it's bringing Sarah back and saying, okay, can you clarify for this and then tell us what next steps are and whether you can help us with that. And then, I mean, update the employees and let them know that we're taking this serious, we're bringing her back, we're looking at action steps. So that would be my thought of where we should take this next, because we paid this money to get the lists here of what we need to do. So I think we just need to start chipping away at it.
So then with this, are we going to look at creating an ad hoc committee for having like either a joint employee slash council committee or commission or whatever body, subcommittee to initiate these or to at least see that there's follow-through or would that fall underneath the HR committee? Because if it is a case where we start looking at if we have action tonight saying that we want to go ahead and address these, I think we also need to create some type of either a timeline or guidelines or something that goes along with it to ensure, like you had mentioned, that employees would feel that we're doing something about that.
Yeah, I mean, I would agree. I mean, we have the survey results, the longer we wait, the less accurate they are, because things could get better, things could get worse. I think when I read a lot of her recommendations, they fall under what would be considered HR. I mean, talking about clearly defining expectations of supervisors and managers, a lot of these would be changes and possibly job descriptions, implementing a talent development and coaching model, things like that, that we've, I've experienced in employee surveys, all get rolled down typically to department heads or, and then they, the actions taken from there. But it's initiated typically through HR, not necessarily one department does this, one department does that, or the employees develop it. It's, changes are coming from the people who know how to put together new job descriptions and, yeah.
Right. And I think first step should be bringing her back instead of us making motions to create committees and do all those different things. We might be putting the cart before the horse and I think maybe get her back here and have her start. Obviously, I don't think this is her first time ever doing anything like this, so maybe we should rely on her expertise to say, okay, this really should be our first step and start there.
Ms. Urban, do you have any follow-up with what we're kind of talking about now?
I think that makes good sense to bring Sarah back and help her prioritize this. I agree with you. You want to, you want to do something, right? You don't want to say, well, this is great and put it on a shelf. However, to Alder Person Blazer's point, you don't want to put, right, the cart before the horse. You want to know what you're trying to work on, you want to know what you're trying to fix. And I would want to get from Sarah priorities and the order in which she feels we should start, you know, checking off that list. Some things are easier to do, some things take less time, some of those items would, you know, take a span of four months or six months, but I agree that we should start working on it.
So one of the concerns was, you know, basically the politics. So, you know, how do they word that? Do you remember how they worded that? It made it almost sound like maybe like the mayor or the council or both kind of.
Was it a leadership conflict or something like that?
It could have been. It was one of the primary complaints and it was basically like the top, politics, right, playing a role in day-to-day operations. And I'm sure this, you know, everything I've heard from everybody here at the table is kind of on the, on the point of we want to facilitate change rather than have council come in and direct change. And I'm, I would just want to be careful, I guess, that we don't, you know, end up messing it up more.
No, that makes a lot of sense. That really makes sense there. You know, and with that, bringing a professional back and a professional who worked on the survey itself, bringing Sarah back, it sounds like it's resonating. Is there any potentially concerns with that would be the first step? Do we want to set a timeline? Do we want to reach out? Because obviously Sarah might, might be booked, you know, a lot of times if you, you know, you got a lot of stuff set up in the future. So how would we, if we're looking at first step, bringing Sarah back, getting clarification, getting further information, suggestions and potential goals or options that we have, how do we want to proceed with that?
I would say we're going to have to purchase more of her services to go through this. So whether go to HR Committee and discuss the next action and then go to finance. I think if we could get her, then next one of those committee meetings for September, that would be a good first step. And then decide what we need to purchase, how much it's going to cost, you know, all that.
Well, it seems that she's done this before apparently, right? So she must have a logical seat. She must, she, in my opinion, she should be able to come to the common council or the HR, whomever, with this is a packet, these are the suggestions, what you should do first, second or third. These are things I could do, these are things maybe someone from Mid-State or Stevens Point, this is somebody from HR, the director from HR, whomever. But to come to us with a package as to this is how you might break it apart and do it rather than coming and just having a general, let's have a discussion and it seems like it's a logical, if you've done, if she's done enough of these and the appearance she had, then she should, in my opinion, she should be able to come and this is what I suggest here, boom, 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 boom. And not have a meeting of just general, and then we could suggest changing that, but just come with something concrete. Because I felt like everyone else, I don't know, I felt leaving there, I said to my wife, it's like going to the doctor and say you're dying, but is it a heart attack? Is it liver? Is it blood pressure? And you don't know. And so it's the idea you want to filter this out so you can do things to keep healthier. And it's the same concept. So, but if she could come with something concrete and then internally we could take it or bring in people, local, expert or her services, but that's all I see it.
I have a question. Can I sneak?
Yeah, go ahead.
So my other, you and I just talked about retaining Sarah again. I liked her, but I have to say, I did the interview without even knowing her credentials. I don't know anything about her. In my interview, personally, I'll say that I felt it was very relaxed. I had to get up and close the doors so that other people didn't listen to the interview. We were at the Lowell Center. I had other employees walking around the doors while I was doing my interview. So I'm just kind of interested in going forward, what makes her the best person for the job as an employee as well, I guess. So I just want to say that.
But that's a good point. I mean, we chose her and she did the survey and we probably should have the same survey if we could have some comparisons, apples to apples. But that's why I mentioned Mid-State might have somebody, Stevens Point have some leadership individuals or what have you, but does it have to be her? And sometimes is the person selling the package? And all of a sudden now, oh, three, it's going to be a three-year project and maybe it doesn't have to be a three-year project and things like that. So I don't know, but she's done the first one and it seems that if she came back with something concrete, then we could decide as a common council, as employees or whomever, to see how to accomplish that.
Absolutely.
And maybe, maybe it might be as much as easy at the next HR meeting if she can even prepare something in writing, which I don't know if she even.
A proposal?
Yeah, she, maybe she doesn't even need to be here and she could put exactly what Scott's putting down is, these are the steps I recommend and these are things I can help you with and these are things I can't. When you might need to go check out this resource, but, and then also, you know, even, and I, I wish we would have thought of that ahead of time, but put together a credentials or a little, prepare something that we could have given out to employees about Sarah and her background and what she does and her experience and maybe help the employees buy in and she's a credible person. Not that she isn't, but.
I just have one other comment if it's okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I would caution, if we're going to use this survey data and if we're going to say the survey responses are what we're going to use, I would caution against having another consultant come in and trying to pick up what Sarah did. There's nothing wrong with using another person, but that next consultant will want to use his or her own surveys and their own methodologies. Is it, is it a commercial or is it a buy-in for further services? Absolutely. Any consultant you work with, in my opinion, is going to try to do that next step, right? They're going to try to, right, keep you as a repeat customer. I don't think that's something that's, that Sarah only would be interested in doing. And I don't think they do it just from a purely money standpoint, I think that's part of it. I do think they're doing it to help because if they see something on the surface, they tend to want to dive a little bit deeper. So, yeah, I, to Alder Person Kelleck's point, I do agree with you.
So is, with that being said, it sounds like we're kind of somewhat all in consensus with wanting to take a next step, wanting to hear what the, what the next step would be suggested by the individual or firm or Sarah who conducted the surveys and not necessarily having that person do the next step, but at least having a recommendation from that person, even if there is a charge. And I'm sure because unless it's unicef, no one's going to do anything for free. So it's, I think that we would want to try and do that, but having that proposal or something in writing for the next HR committee so that we can decide, you know, whether we want to move forward. So is that something that someone wants to make a motion for on the floor?
Do you need a motion soon or can we just direct Dawn to do that?
Yeah, I think you could. I mean, generally you don't take, I mean, you can make referrals to committees and such at this step. And I think really what you're doing is you're referring this to HR to, you know, take the next step and look at whatever. And I guess the question is whether something's going to be done before the next HR meeting or the HR committee is going to kind of package this and then direct. I don't think there's any harm in just directing staff to start getting the background materials from Sarah. She's the one that was, that was retained originally just on the next, possible next steps in her HR committee. Unless HR committee feels that they want to, you know, might go in a different direction or something, but I think.
Well, all HR committees here, but I, I don't know if everybody agrees, but I think we should ask Dawn to get that information so much ready for the next HR, so we're not having HR meeting to talk about and having Dawn and then waiting another month, you know? So I think let's keep this ball rolling quicker and have Dawn bring that back to the next HR meeting.
And then it's a good faith response for our employees too, knowing that we are, we're taking action to move forward. So with that being said, do I got a motion?
Yeah, I guess if we need to make a motion, that we have the HR director make contact or put the consultant on next step.
Second.
Who's that, sir? So I got a motion on the floor to direct HR Director to contact Sarah. What is the firm's name? What is her actual?
Ideation Consulting.
I'm sorry.
Ideation.
Ideation, okay. Ideation Consulting, okay. So I'll repeat the motion in a second. A motion on the floor, second, to direct HR Director to contact Ideation Consulting to draw up a proposal for a next step in addressing the original survey presentation to the HR committee. Is that correct? Is it? Okay. I will call for a vote. I don't think we need a roll call vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. So then we will go on to item number three, discuss and act why the special HR meeting held August 7, 2019 has been removed from the city's broadcasting and when will the recorded meeting be reinstated? Now, I, with this, I was understanding, I got the understanding that it is now back on our YouTube channel? I don't know.
It was always on YouTube.
Yeah.
It was always on our committee.
Well, it was made private. Therefore, anybody could not, not even council members could not find it on the YouTube channel.
Hey, when I tried to find it, I could find it. I thought the issue was more with Facebook, with Facebook or something, but I, I don't know. Didn't you get something from the IT manager about what had happened and then it was out there?
We got an IT, we got an email from Tyler, I think this morning, but I guess I can, I had gotten some phone calls that morning saying that, that they, that it was pulled off, you couldn't watch it. So then I called RCCA and they said they were directed to market private, have DVDs available for checkout. And that's what I was informed that day, that morning. So from the mayor. Checkout.
Rent?
If you go.
You can, you can go there and get a DVD of it and sign it out.
It's, yeah, it's, I think the link was sent to all employees, right? I guess, and.
Now it has, yeah, now it has. Tyler sent it to. For, I don't know about Friday, but.
It was available. It's actually comes up like when the first meeting, it's where the meetings usually are, but.
Yeah, and I went out there.
Not on Facebook, so I don't know.
And I went out there and I didn't see it. And so that, that obviously became concerning to me, but I don't know why RCCA would tell me that it was, they were told to market private and have DVDs available for checkout. So I don't want more to say other than obviously they were directed to do that.
Well, it's good this changed.
It is, but it's censorship, in my opinion. I think it's, it should never even come to that.
Right. Well, if there's any.
It's a public meeting, it was, HR was, was noticed that it's going to be taped, it was noticed it's going to be on. I just, it's censorship. It is blatant censorship.
Sorry to.
I'm sorry, John.
Talk over this.
Yeah, I'm just passionate about it because it's just ridiculous.
I mean, if there's any truth to that, and that's first, I heard that, but I mean, if you had to sign your name to it, that would be concerning. Almost like who's watching it?
And then you got to bring it back too.
Right. I don't know. Is that?
And then how much time does it take city staff to burn DVDs for people that come in?
I think.
RCCA has got a lot better things to do than that.
Well, do we have a policy? I mean, it was a publicly noticed, open meeting. I mean, it should have just been on there.
Absolutely.
It's, RCCA shouldn't, I wouldn't think should have the autonomy just to, even if they're told to do it, you know?
Well, your supervisor tells you to do it, you're going to do it. Well, your supervisor tells you to do it, you're going to do it. If that's technically what happened, but, and that's my concern.
My concern is a legitimate concern. I have no problem with that. I mean, and when you do it, if that is the case, then it becomes more like people really want to see it.
Well, it's a whole, it just highlights it even more.
Yeah.
Makes it worse.
Yeah, it's like, whoa, got to see this thing. But yeah, it should have been on then.
Is there a policy on such a thing? Not, not really.
No. I mean, yeah, generally, our, our meetings are, oh, I mean, at the bottom of our things, it says it's available, maybe after so many hours on, on the, on the sites.
Sorry.
No, no.
It was on, when I looked, at the end of last week, so I don't, I think that was Friday, I think Friday. One night was...
Was it meeting Wednesday?
It was Friday when I came into your office.
Yeah.
Okay.
The seventh.
Yeah, so it was Wednesday.
It was, yeah. I can't, this is the first I've heard of it being pulled. But on YouTube, it does say it was published August 8. Now, someone changed it private and then changed it back public. I mean, that, I watched it on Facebook Live that night. So yeah, the day or two after it was pulled, that is interesting, to say the least, and I think that's a concern.
Because it wasn't on Facebook.
I watched it, it wasn't on the Facebook feed, okay. I watched it when it was live on there.
Because it does say at the bottom of the meeting, it says it will be viewed live on these channels, both Scotts Rapids Community Media website, stream on the Facebook page, Scotts Rapids Facebook page. The meeting will also be available after its conclusion on the city's Facebook page, and the community media's YouTube page, and can be accessed, or accessed at WR-CM.org. I just, I just don't think that anybody should make that decision if that was the decision to pull it.
So should we create a policy on that?
I was just going to see if, even make a motion if that's within our authority to just make a policy that any open, I mean, any open meeting should be removed, it should be.
We do got to discuss an act, so we could create action on this.
Committee of the whole does not take action.
We could make a recommendation to the next council meeting.
Or to...
The committee or...
...legislative.
Yeah, because we could even make it to the next council meeting, a recommendation. We're all here anyway.
So can I make them?
You can make, I just could, my, I think the greater concern is we're having our media overseen by one elected person, and I think that's the problem, you know? Our, their direct supervisor besides Tyler, or I think it's, to apologize, I don't know, is it Tyler, the new media?
Yes.
Tyler, who's directly supervised by the mayor. And I, so now we have one, one chain of command there. And this is our, supposed to be our local, obviously, it's not, not a national news channel here, but it still is only, it's our local media. And one person is overseeing, one elected person is overseeing that position, not a pendant.
Right.
You can make whatever, yeah.
Well, I mean, elected official change. I think that's why there should be standing, some sort of standing procedure that governs it. And I mean, if it's an open meeting, there really is no reason why it ever should be edited or withheld or marked private until you get to closed session. Then obviously, different story. So how about if I just made a motion to direct council to establish policies pertaining to social media and, you know, city media from, from open meetings?
Or the, I think even more simple would be making a motion and having a second for establishing a policy that every single recorded public meeting is, will always be publicly available on our media broadcast platforms.
And if it isn't, what's recourse?
Yeah.
That's my concern. Yeah.
Well, then Tyler, then Tyler would know.
Well, sometimes, well, yeah, I mean, I guess within a certain amount of time, I would say. When I'm looking for a certain recording that's now corrupted and I can't get it, so. And I know there was an issue with the Facebook page that night, that it had to be divided into two people who were watching it. So I think then they waited for it to be, you know, then they edited, they put it all together. I don't mean edited, but like taking out things, but make it all in one form so that when it's placed on the, on the, I mean, you can see the nice version that's on the media. That doesn't happen right away from the recording. They take it and they have to download, and so it takes some time. So it's not necessarily immediate. But I mean, yeah, I think just there's a reasonable time that it can be. And I think you're probably directing, I mean, whether that's a legislative or another, I guess it probably might be legislative, I guess, more of a, maybe directed to that committee to, because you can't, this committee doesn't really like make action or, you know, make policy, or, or, you know, but you can refer to someplace to do that. I don't know if it's legislative, or I guess we'll just connect to council.
And I'd be fine with that, just for the reason you say. I mean, I'm not prepared to say that there's any, you know, there's evidence that anything nefarious necessarily existed, but I mean, I think policies would prevent that also. So, you know, that, the impression of such.
Although this committee may not necessarily, in the past, have not authorized policies, we can put it on.
Not a committee of the whole.
Our, we're referral, just like every other committee.
Right, so you can refer it somewhere else.
So this can be on, this will be on the next council meeting. So if there is action, then we...
If you feel like policies like that should just go direct to council and not be to a committee, I mean, yeah, that's a question.
And we're specifically what we're talking.
The one thing I would say is that I think we need to maybe hash this out a little more, because I, there should be a policy, that's clear. But what about the amount of time it needs to be on, up by, things like that, unless we're going to put that in the motion right now?
You know what's interesting is that, like state statute, minutes have to be published, but there is no timeline for that. This state statute leaves it open that way. So there are extenuating circumstances, and, you know, with technology and whatever else, and we could leave it open at it. Because then if there was a situation where there was, and the term that we use is alleged temporarily removal of that, then that's when we can look at the policy and say, hey, if it was removed, now that's got to be on there. If it hasn't been uploaded in the first place, there might be a reason for that, you know? So that's where kind of getting into that guideline with the recommendation, two weeks or whatever may, because then that's where, how do you, what, how would you punish someone? Is someone punishable about that, you know, and where does that go? So.
Yes, sir.
There's somebody in that room over there, right there, that can answer the questions about how long it takes to upload it into the, how long it takes to make it available.
Steve.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Steve.
I'm trying to get my wording here. These are public meetings, and the public has a right to know. But I also, in the interest of concern for the city and the interest of fairness, want to look at this through on other lens here, too, which is, has other persons, sometimes we're entrusted with confidential information. And sometimes, unknowingly, maybe this confidential information, like when we go into closed session and we're discussing things that are of a sensitive nature for why we go into closed session, sometimes at a meeting, when these things aren't supposed to be made public for the reasons that are outlined, it is made public. And I guess the question we need to ask ourselves is, before we go full bore one way and say we can't have any censorship, I think we also need to look at saying, what are we going to do if something gets out that should not be out there? There's that avenue. Or what if we have a committee meeting or a council meeting where somebody is out of control and there's a lot of obscene language being put out there? Is that something that has a council that we really want out there on our, on our social media website with somebody dropping an F-bomb or any other word? I just, I think if there's something that shouldn't be out there, there has to be some, some recourse to walk it back or, or correct it. You know, just case in point, kind of unrelated but related, there was a bunch of feet, negative feedback about something going to the newspaper that should have not made the newspaper regarding the senior center. And we had to, we had to walk that back. There was a negative consequence of it. I just, like I said, I'm not advocating that we're not transparent with the public, that we don't show everything. But sometimes we're entrusted with information that needs to be kept in house until there's an appropriate time for that information to be released.
You're right. You're absolutely right. But there are, there are remedies to open meetings by, or close session violations. So there, a council member could face up to criminal charges with it, depending upon what it is. But we also need to realize that in the state of Wisconsin, every meeting is assumed public meeting or viewable to the public unless there is a closed session exemption to that. We just can't have a closed session meeting without exempting the law, because the law compels any type of public entity to have open meetings. So that's where, you know, it, obviously, there are reasons like in a closed session, you know, for disseminating information. But the public, it's viewed that the public has a right to every public meeting unless there's a specific exemption to that.
Yeah. And I was just going to say, state statutes cover that. You're actually violating statute. And if not criminally, then the, what is it now, the EEC? It used to be the GAB.
The Elections Commission.
So I don't think we need remedies in place for that, because there already are. And as a council, there's sanctions. I have never seen it.
But that's the accessibility of meeting, and there's no, there's no law or anything that requires you to videotape a meeting or, you know?
Which, which, which exactly, my point is, well, I mean, that seems to be what we want as a council, and therefore that's the intent of the, or insert.
No, you're fine. I'm just getting my finger up, ready to go.
Yeah.
So my question, too, then, is who makes that determination if we're going to air a meeting or not show a meeting, or technically, who has that?
I mean, in the past, it's kind of been like the chair. I mean, previously, HR meetings weren't, weren't televised, and then they started to be televised. And I mean, there's no, I mean, I think to some extent, we try to, you know, they, they take the council meetings and the standing committee meetings and...
R-K-R.
R-K-R. You know, they don't do wastewater. They don't do, I mean, so it's kind of, I mean, maybe now's a good time to address that, too, when, you know, that happens, it doesn't happen. But there's nothing, I mean, I don't know if public access has an, or community media has an internal policy if it's based on, you know, volunteers or ability of, you know, but I think, no, there's the basic. I think now, three standing committees in the council, I think that's pretty much a given that they would be. And, and so I think they have been.
All right. I'm going to reiterate, and everyone can do pub, so go ahead. I was just going to say, they were told to market private, check out DVDs. That's, that's what I was told. So I don't think they're going to make it up. And that's my concern. Especially being my HR committee, which I want them all publicized.
I have a question.
Yeah, interesting. There are, you know, a lot of our committees are televised, taped and played later or whatever. I don't know how many are played live anymore. The problem that, I mean, we can look at, should more be televised, such as all the wastewater meetings or something? Or, I mean, the water and light, those are on. So that, if there's more meetings that we want to tape to show is one thing. The issue, I think, that we have tonight is something that's pulled. And maybe we need something in writing. I don't know for sure, because it's a public meeting, our policy is to show that. To pull it seems to me not right. That I don't care who you are, you don't give the okay to pull that. That if you don't, if you don't like what took place, well, there's a chance, I guess, to try to get on another, the next meeting to address what was said, discussed in that. So that, I think that's what, you know, tonight, the issue is, from what I'm hearing, that it was told to be pulled off, shut down. And that's what, that's, that's the issue that we have. I think, should others be played, or for how long they should be on the air, or if there should be a deadline to, you know, for two weeks, then they're pulled off, or go into limbo somewhere that you could still get at, because I don't think they should be destroyed either, at least for a long period of time. That, so that, to me, is the issue, you know, the crux of this, this evening, is that it was there. It was a notice meeting. Those meetings of that committee are taped, are televised. They're on there to go look at it later at your leisure. You know, it's just, it shouldn't, it shouldn't have been pulled. And that's, that's the issue that confronts us this evening with this. I'm sure over all the years, there's probably, that I necessarily ended up maybe voting the wrong way, but didn't explain something in the way that I wished that maybe I had later, you know, but I had said it. And I had to live with that. And I either tried to correct it later on, that I said something wrong, or just dragged it wrong or whatever. But I don't know if that did or not. But they're open meetings, we do show them, other than when legally we can, and then we do go into closed session. And that, that's where, you know, things stay. But as far as an open meeting, it's, they're, they're open, and like it or not, I guess what takes place, it takes place. I guess that's one of the advantages or disadvantages in the day that we live in, that things are, you know, everything we do is on, is on tape. I mean, the government knows where we are from, well, 24 hours a day, basically. I mean, they can track what you, what you've done in your whole life. So, you know, to censor something else such as this is just not, to me, not the right thing to do. Again, that probably wasn't said necessarily the right way, but I think that that's the issue that we have tonight, is why, and why was it pulled? Should it have been pulled? I don't think it should have, so.
And what we, what can we do to move forward to ensure that it doesn't happen again?
Yes. So right now, we don't even have a policy that says that they necessarily need to be recorded and put up on the channels. So I think we got to start with creating a policy that says the main three committees will, any common council meetings, and then by what timeframe, and whether that's, and hopefully, city staff or, or we can help us develop that policy and have it ready for wherever committee goes next, whether it's other slate. But I think those would be the next actions. First, we need a policy that they need to be recorded. And then we need a policy, or in that same policy, that they need to be up and stay up by this timeframe. So it seems like logical next steps.
As you say, Jennifer Prater, hand up your...
Oh, sorry. I guess I was just curious. I agree with you guys' policy, keep things consistent. But do we know that, because I also could access it on YouTube, you know, a couple of days later, and I believe with my experience working with community media before, that it takes 24 to 48 hours or whatever to get on YouTube once it's recorded. So the marketing of private, on all avenues that we blast, or, because I know that's a specific Facebook feature, was that the only place that it was taken down and we, and everybody still had access to the other avenues?
I don't know. I was, I called and asked, because I was, I had gotten phone calls that it was taken down. So I called and asked, and I said... They said, I asked about the HR committee meeting. They were told to market private and have DVDs available for checkout.
Yeah, and DVDs I don't, I don't know about, but I, like I said, just because I also helped with the city Facebook page, and I run the private mayor's youth council page, so I understand that marketing it private feature, I don't know if that's even a feature on YouTube, but that's why I'm asking, is if it was still available in our other avenues and that it was only pulled from Facebook, because then we really weren't stopping people from viewing it just only on the one. And I also know, because I put in the complaint, that Facebook didn't work for months for meetings, because that's normally where I watch them, and nobody said anything about it for most of this year, actually.
Did you contact me?
I did not. I contacted the IT department and found out that they needed to work with Solaris to fix the feature, and that HR committee meeting was one of the first meetings since it was fixed. So, that's all I know.
In my mind, there's no reason why you would tell people that there's, or tell them that there are DVDs and you need to check them all. To me, that, I don't know, just not buying it. Not buying it.
So is there any, in the essence of time, we're 21 minutes past that we get a special council meeting scheduled tonight. In the essence of time, do I hear any referrals or motions to send it to a specific committee? Or even, like I said, I don't think that it's illegal to make a motion to create a policy on the floor and send it to the council on Tuesday night to establish something. Now, the question is, what do we, what is the language with that? Do we got enough time tonight to talk about that?
Think it's pretty quick.
But can we, is there a referral to the legislative committee to establish?
Make a referral.
So, do we want to make that as a motion reflected as a referral?
Sure. I mean, yeah, I mean, my referral or motion would just be that we look at a policy that states that the three main committees, HR, Public Works, Finance, and Common Council meetings, all be recorded, because we don't have a policy for that right now, and that when published, they remain public.
And, and send that to the legislative, the next legislative committee?
Right, correct.
Okay, so a motion to second. You want a second, Mr. Keller?
Okay. Motion on the floor, second, to record or make a recommendation to record all three main standing committee meetings and the council meeting, as we have in the past.
Also add legislative on there.
And legislative committee, the fourth committee, standing committee that we have, and have that referred to the next legislative committee with all, with motion on the floor, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. We're gonna say aye.
As far, you know, recorded and that type, I'm not, I, I mean, but.
Or for, for having anything that's recorded being published, or?
Okay, but to, you know, necessarily, probably to say which, you know, we can say which committees, but if we leave any committees out, out, that doesn't restrict.
Yeah.
Community access from going to others.
That's true.
I mean.
But isn't that what legislative committee's gonna do, is to kind of come up with something?
Yeah, as long as they're not restricted, but as long as they're not restricted by ones that are mentioned.
They can work on the details.
How about to make it a little bit easier? Would you want to amend your ordinance, I meant your ordinance, amend your motion to state referral to legislative committee to establish a policy regarding the broadcasting of publicly recorded meetings? Something like that?
Well, yeah, it's just twofold, though. I want to make sure that the committee meetings get recorded and then they get published and stay published. So.
Okay.
That, that would be the, what I'd like the legislative committee to.
So that was your original motion, anyway?
Yep.
There was a second, okay.
Yeah.
And everybody get, yes?
Go ahead, if that, I've got another motion after that.
Okay.
No, I just agree.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
I'm sorry, I was an aye, I was thinking my motion.
That's fine. So then.
And my, I guess I'll make a second motion, whether or not it goes anywhere, but to make a referral to legislative committee, that we remove RCCA as a depart, city department and have it basically, what?
To, I don't know if that would be, put HR.
Would be, yeah.
For whatever.
Okay. Just that, I, I think it should be autonomous, about, okay, I'll save that, I'll just take that up, up HR. I'll put that on there, go that route. We can discuss it then.
Would you want to make?
I want to make a motion.
Okay. So, we'll send a referral to legislative committee, and with that being said, we'll go to item number four and adjourn, so, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Ray, and second by Mr. Coe, to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are now adjourned of the committee of the whole meeting at 5:56 PM.